What I would like to do is call the meeting to order at 3:06. This is the Board of Selectmen work session on Thursday, January 2nd. This meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk for record-keeping. And I've already been informed by Mr. Gant that he would like to record the meeting as well and is doing so with my permission. He's welcome to do it, period. There's an attendance sheet going around. Everybody knows who Mr. Larson is, so we're not sure he's included. And I'd also like to welcome Kevin Gabriel to the meeting with us. This is essentially, could be a relatively short meeting. I've asked the Town Administrator, Kevin, to present the initial draft of the FY21 budget. This is not the meeting we're going to go through and discuss line item by line item by line item because this is kind of the first time we've seen it. We need a little time. It will get presented formally to us with possibly some repetition of the points that Kevin will make today. It will be presented formally to us on Monday. It goes up in board docs that day. Everybody sees it. This is a draft. It's 95 percent or better, but it may have a couple of minor changes. But this primarily introduce us to it and to have Kevin give us kind of a heads-up and flags and things that we may want to in our weekend reading look at and be prepared for. The other thing I would say is that, probably taking a thunderwiz, I know you have some of these on your list too. In discussing this with Kevin, it became apparent, particularly with Mr. Gant being out of vacation on our next after Monday official selectmen's meeting, that I think it's really important the four of us be present for budget discussions. So, tighten your belts, everybody, or tighten your seatbelts. We're going to do three weeks of Board of Selectmen working sessions, three weeks in a row, so that we can use that time to take the time we need to discuss this. They will be basically single or possibly, talk about warned a little bit too on those, but essentially, single-purpose sessions and so on, which we will announce. And of course, they'll be open to the public and we can move to bigger room if a lot of people show up. But it just seems that this is particularly important, being Kevin's first year and maybe as impressed as I am with his thoroughness today. So, having said all that, I would like to turn item three over to Kevin Hartman, who is our Town Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, everybody. So, first and foremost, budget. It's been pretty busy the last week or two, well, the last four weeks, but especially last couple when it comes to the budget. We've have sort of tried by fire for myself personally, but I said this before and I'll say it again, it's the time, it's been a lot of stress, a lot of time put into it, but it's been good time put towards it. Needed time to understand, not just what the numbers are, but what's behind these numbers. And so, like the Chairman said, we will formally be submitting a package of budget information to you folks on Monday at the Board of Selectmen meeting. Give you some highlights then, as well as today, of what's within there. Today, we're probably 90, 95 percent there. We just want to make sure, the initial timeline said that we'd be submitting that budget on Monday, but we're, with the working group session, we've been working extra hard, Catherine especially, on making sure that we have this information as tight as we could for today's meeting. So you have something that you can go back and start reviewing. As the Chairman said, we will be submitting, hopefully, the same document to you if it doesn't have too many changes between now and then. But the conversation we have today and for the conversations with a couple of departments, we might have a tweak here or there, but we feel very confident with the work that's been done within it.
Kevin, can I just ask one thing?
Sure.
If another packet comes, we're going to be reviewing this one. Could you just highlight for us what has changed for the Monday meeting between the packet you're presenting on Monday and this?
Absolutely.
To make it easier.
Absolutely. So, there's a lot of information associated with this document here. More detail on the revenue side, more information related to the backup on some of the changes associated with any line item that has gone up in cost. All that information's getting its final reviews. But with the working session today and how far along we've come and the amount of effort put into it, I'm proud to say we're in a really great spot around the budget. And any changes that happen today until Monday, we'll certainly highlight that.
Okay. Thank you.
So, just to kind of review the calendar to date of what we've been working on, budgets were due from the department heads to our Town Council, Catherine, in two tiers, tier one, tier two. Tier one was on the 20th, tier two was on 27th of December. So built in there was a holiday and another holiday. But what then happens is each of those individual budgets get compiled into a single budget that has the entirety of, which is what's here today, which we call the omnibus. And in addition to that, like I said, there's a lot of backup information that gets worked on as well. But that's what really the work that's been done over the last week and a half plus is preparing all of that.
Kevin, just for the record, I understand that the omnibus budget is our operating budget.
Correct.
And then we have other articles here and there that may include capital items and so on, but I think it's important for anybody who may be looking to understand, this is the operating budget, which more or less reflects the on, should reflect the ongoing expenses, not special expenses.
So just, budgets were due. Prior to those budgets being due, I did have the opportunity, basically, my first day onward, Debbie was scheduling pretty crazy with all the department heads.
Well, you've been here for a month.
I, and I know.
You've probably seen one, you've been five years.
I, I'm very familiar now with the office. I had a chance to meet all the department heads. And what we did is we went line item by line item of their proposed budgets at the time. Because of the time the budgets were due and when I arrived, some of the budgets at the time were not 100 percent, but the department heads, for the most part, were close to it of what they were going to submit. And the ones who weren't, at least had some ideas of potential changes they might include. So when the budgets were presented to Catherine and I over the last week and a half, a lot of those items that we had previously talked about were identified in the budget and were still there. So we had a good understanding of what those represented and what was behind them.
Kevin, one other question.
Yeah, of course.
When Robin was here, she had made the recommendation that some items maybe should move over from capital into operating. Has any of that happened? Or to John's point, is this strictly operating as we know operating with no capital being moved over into this budget?
Great question. So, yeah, basically, what we have here is a budget that is in compliance with the guidelines with FinCom, which includes no additional increases to the other categories within here. The recurring costs such as the radios for the police station or turnout gear for the fire department, which every year, say, has a $10,000 cost associated with it, those have been included in the capital. But it's up for discussion on if it's something we want to include in the operating budget.
But nothing has been moved over yet. It still remains in capital.
Part of the conversation.
I thought we'd give him a year to get his figure.
No, just because that would have been confusing.
That'd be a very good question.
That'd be my thought, too. I understand what Robin was saying and I agree with her, okay? But laying it on him at this point in time and he and Catherine trying to make this thing work in the course of a month, those items deserve some more conversation, I think. We'll get there and I think we should proceed.
It probably deserves a conversation with the Finance Committee, too, so that we're on the same page.
Yeah.
But I, my sense very much is that what we're trying to do is, in a sense, using the template that's been used in the past, which everybody else is familiar with, to do the best job possible for this year. So it will be structured as it has been in previous years. The numbers, of course, change a little bit here, but the sort of approach and structure isn't going to change. But as Kevin said, I think it is important that we have a conversation early with the FinCom. I know they don't start meeting until fall usually, but we may see what we can do to get together with them and talk about this in a sense of, do we want to do this? What are the pros and cons? Whether it's beneficial, not beneficial, and so on, and to have that conversation before the preparation begins for next year, but not to put it on this year. There's enough going on.
Yeah, especially since we had already broached the subject of even just raising the level, the dollar level, and FinCom said, let's have a discussion. So even the dollar level for capital, they stepped back.
We're just, we're keeping it the same so that Kevin doesn't have to fight any battles with anybody else except us.
And what I hear is that, not just the capital, but just in general, we're not changing the process at this point.
Exactly.
From last year. So the process is going to be somewhat the same.
Yes, exactly. Exactly.
However, one of the things I've picked up on, just through the process and fresh eyes on it, experiences, one thing I want to make sure, through the process, that the department heads, that budget comes up and through the TA and through myself, so that I have a chance to work with them through that. When the FinCom contacts them, trying to make myself available as well for those meetings when the liaison reaches out. Because the budget we put forward is coming from the entirety, myself and those departments, and it's important that we're in sync on what we're trying to accomplish and doing it together. So, to that and to the calendar component of it, ensuring there's sort of steps in the process of the submittal. Like I said, Monday, I'm excited to formally submit the budget to you folks. There'll be a letter associated with it and all the backup and we can talk a little bit about some of the highlights, like we'll talk about today. But, you know, the steps are really important. Version control is part of that as well. When there's a clear step-by-step and there's not multiple, where it's getting dumped and one pulled back and another set out, it's really important those steps are in place so that we can have a consistent version that goes out, hopefully, once, maybe twice. There's obviously going to be some edits, but trying to limit that's important. So, it's something I'm keeping my eyes on and I've got a whiteboard full of ideas that I've been brushing.
Version control is huge.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, the, so right now, I can pass this out to everybody. This is labeled draft for you.
Oh, come on. Just want to be clear, note that the date, I was kind of clear with Kevin on this, the date on the bottom will change for Monday. Even if the content stays exactly the same, the draft will disappear and the date will change. So you'll have those direct indicators and they're on each page, have those direct indicators which version you're looking at, and this will be a process going forward from here on.
So, next steps. So, now that you've given me the draft, you have something you can look at between now and Monday to get you sort of understanding where some of the items within the budget, what the changes might look like. We'll come to you on Monday formally submitting the fiscal 21 budget with its backup documentation. And I just want to say, though, more importantly than, I think, the ink on this paper, the people behind this is what's made this process special and what's made all the work and the timelines, the tight timelines, successful. Again, Catherine has done tremendous work on holidays. We've been contacting each other on Christmas and on New Year's Day. Making sure where we are with everything and she's been working tremendously hard. But the departments as well. There's a lot of thought that goes into these budgets when it comes to how they're going to operate, because the way town government works is you really have the shot to put the monies in there that you need to, but you need to do it in a thoughtful way that's truly representative of what our costs are going to be. So just a thank you to the department heads. So just some highlights of the budget. Revenue is going to be something that obviously is important to determine how we can operate.
Not high enough.
So the sheet I just passed out gives you a little bit of idea of the tax levy, what we can produce on it. Couple things just to sort of point out. One thing that's really important is new growth. When we have limitations on how much that tax base can grow, new growth is really important. Last year, we saw a pretty good amount of increase on the new growth project, as I understood, rolling green. There's 60 percent of those units, 60 percent of 11 of those units have still not been accounted for from taxation purposes. And so that coupled with some other new growth opportunities, we're at assessors' office to see about $75,000 this coming year in the budget for that. We hope to surpass that, but that's the number that that department is.
So we're assuming all 11 will be closed in the coming year?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
That they're hoping to sell them, because they're not pending.
The developer certainly hopes so.
Yes, I was going to say. I just drove by it to him, house sign it's out.
Yeah, I went the other day and saw a couple of the units and definitely nine are still in the market, could be off, all 11.
And I know that, and that number, 75, is not solely on the rolling green project, but that is the largest component of that.
Just a question, Kevin. Until they are sold, are there tax revenues that the developer pays towards?
So they're based on completion, substantial completion of the project, too. So there's certain, 40 percent of those 11 units have already been accounted for for the construction and the dollars, that they're, the value of those partial constructions or full constructions. So, yes, there's, they are.
Until they reach a certain threshold, they're not taxed?
They're taxed at a certain partial. Yeah, there's partial taxation of the property based on the percentage of completion and so forth. And there's a guide that will use that, or outlines how that taxation works.
This, I'm asking you some questions. What's a CO, a certificate of occupancy has been issued for a property and it is fully taxed and it is up to the, if it's not sold, then it's up to the developer to pay the taxes as though it was sold. It's officially a property completely done. What's a CO always done?
My understanding.
That's my understanding.
As long as the building is completed, not based on the occupancy necessarily, it's based on completion. The certificate triggers that to be a completed building.
But the other thing is, I understand that the taxation, this is just a question, at 100, if when it's 100 percent complete, then basically the assessors' office uses their formula to determine the value. So upon the sale of that, there's no necessarily further impact on the tax value of it, because it isn't. It may, you, every time, when you move into, like, when you get a CO, then you end up, your house gets assessed, then reassessed. But in this case, it is assessed at the point of the 100 percent completion, at which point that is the tax valuation for the potential next owner.
But the next year could change dramatically based on what happened within a complex.
Yeah, I realize. Things could change exactly. Every time there's an assessment. That's a really good point.
Just a couple of things to point out. Projections, estate receipts will be about $2 million. Projections on local receipts, 1.6. Chapter 90, a little more than a quarter million dollars. And free cash was submitted on 12/12 by the Treasurer's Office and we did.
Cash.
Sorry, County's Office. And basically, at this point, we did have a conversation with them today. It seemed to be backlog and certification and they asked us to call back a little next week with an update on it. So just by way of.
Give us a rough idea.
It's going to be less than last year. They're all on the mission. We're not really allowed to say. The undesignated fund balance is about 2.2.
Move your lips. What was last year?
In the 2 million range.
In the case of, in the case of the calculated maximum allowable levy number one, it says school districts. It suggests that there's more than one district here. I think this is only the elementary schools that we're talking about, correct? We don't, we don't put in Mascanomets there?
No, Mascanomet goes there as well.
Good. Oh, it is in that? Mascanomet is in that? 80,000?
Yeah, that actually is, but it also could be, it also could be SS Tech or SS Ag. It could also be SS Tech. Right now, it is just Masco. But.
Oh, it's just Masco?
This is, it's just Masco right now. However, if debt were to go out with SS Tech, it could be that as well. So it is, there are two districts for, for top school.
But that amount does not necessarily reflect both districts every year?
No, this is just categories that I, I broke it up into just so that I could keep a track of it.
Good.
The actual, if it were the tri-town, it would be included in number two, well, it could be a 2, 3, 4, depending on where it is, but that would be, because that's part of the town step.
Okay. And you've already said that the school budget's not included in here.
In this budget? So the school budget is leveled at, for placekeeping, at 3 percent. That was their guideline, was 3 percent increase. So for all three of the schools, I increased it by 3 percent just so that it just kind of lessens the blow, you know, when you just get the final figures.
And that was, in the case of Masco, it was 3 percent of the operating budget, because you know what, it's not the total budget because the debt went up and down, and this came down.
The debt's going down.
Yes, yeah. And this, for this, for the purposes of this, it's just 3 percent across.
Including the.
Because you don't do the final step.
Because they also take out, they perform it, or they take out the special, they put that back in as well.
Just on the same, just, it's everything, 3 percent.
Yes, yeah. And it does make a note on that, too, on the budget notes.
Okay. Great.
So, basically, 25.1 million, that's looking at your total taxes. And then if you take in the previously approved debt exclusion, as well as school districts, obviously, then it goes up to 26, 376. 26.4 million.
So we'd look at 25 at the bottom versus 26 to see what the percentage increase is without any other rates? The two bottom numbers?
Yes. We don't tax at the maximum levy limit, though, do we?
I mean, that's what they give us for the levy limit.
It's a limit, we're not at it, though.
No, no, in fact, in last year's budget. The last year's budget was a little bit different. There was 747,000 that was left on the table. However, when you do the free cash, reduce the tax rate, that plays back into this. The year before that, it was 188,000 was left on the table and the year before that, 395,000. So it goes, it goes, it's been as high as, you know, regularly, 600, 700, $800,000. One year it was 21,000. It's gotten a little more consistent. You can't really look at last year's number because we had the Donnie Bristol give back and then we also had to reduce the tax rate as they were anticipating the spike in the debt, that they actually had a higher amount that they used to reduce the tax rate, it was 500,000.
Great. Good.
So, understanding all that happened, what is the increase so far that we're looking at here?
When you say the increase of.
In the taxes being collected.
Oh, I don't have that information yet. Yeah, no, we wouldn't have that.
Subtracting these two numbers and dividing by the FY20 won't give it to us?
Are you looking at these numbers here on this?
Yeah, she's looking at, this is just, this is just revenue.
This is revenue, exactly. And the levy limit, you could look at the difference between the levy limit and probably with the other few hundred thousand.
It does.
Get a sense of what the increase would be. But it doesn't apply to these numbers, it applies to what we actually hope to raise.
Right. And the Finance Committee, they maintain a model, they actually, I keep a separate version of the model to compare with them at all times.
How often do you do that?
Well, so Mike Hartman is the member of the Finance Committee and carrying that as a secondary on this. They last put one out on December 19th. But it's so preliminary that the numbers wouldn't make sense to you right now. You know, I tie right into what they're doing, but you know, there's some liberties here in terms of what the budget's going to be before the budget was even pressed in. So, you know, I try to stay in line with them or at least know where there's variances.
Good. So, like I mentioned, on Monday, there'll be some more documentation and backup on the revenue side of this. But this is kind of give you at least a starting point on the revenue side to start with. So where we spend a lot of our time recently is on the expense side, the operating budget component of it. And so just some general things on that, you all have the detail, but here's a breakout of the cost by department.
So this is a summary of what's in here?
Yes, exactly. So this will give you at least an overview of what we're looking at, as you're looking at, and then you can dive into the detail. You'll have a sense of where they line up year over year against each other.
Just a, when you actually get the Excel version of this, too, you'll see different worksheets on the spreadsheet. And it delves down into two versions of summary, that one that you have there, but also one that's by department, salary and wages and expenses per department. So it works from this 20-page document to a six-page document to a one-page document, and that will be at your access.
Good.
And the salaries that are shown in the budget here are based on the existing contracts? Or we have union contracts? What about the reserve officers?
So there are two elements right now that are determined in the budget that are significant. It's the collective bargaining, the five bargaining units, they all are set to expire the 30th of this, this year now.
Correct.
And if reached out to KPO, the involvement, again, ball rolling with that as well. So right now, what we've done in the budget is we level funded any department which has a union workforce within it. And we've done some models, breaking up different percentages of what it might look like with certain changes based on how negotiations go.
So what we have in front of us is this.
Yeah. 1 percent, 2 percent, and 3 percent, just to get a picture of what it might look like.
But what's in here is 0 percent.
In those categories. Now, anyone who's is not a union employee or not on a contract, Police Chief, Fire Chief, Captain, myself, the rest of the employees are based on a step and grade, or grade and step. And their positions are outlined in the personal guidelines from June 25, 2018, which the field is where they fall in. And each year, there's an increase, a COLA increase associated with each of those positions based on an hourly rate, based on the number of hours they work, multiplied by 52.4 this coming year.
52.2 for this year. It's 52.4, the number of weeks.
And that gets us established.
Down from last year, though, is that, that's important?
Yes, yeah.
So it makes it a little bit easier on the budget plan. You've got to be careful.
So the, the numbers for those positions, you will see an increase on those, because those are known increases associated with salaries.
They're not, you're correct, they're not subject to court.
Negotiations.
But you mentioned it's, as far as the rules and the personal rules and regulations, the movement in the grid is described in that, but not the amount of change in the overall grid itself. That's not, that's not part of the rules and regs. That's up to us.
The increase year over year, what that looks like.
If there's an increase or whatever, it could be. And that decision, what's in here, is, I assume, 2 percent from what we discussed in the recent past.
A 2.75 percent movement across and then a 2 percent.
That's the one that is part of the grid itself and that's part of the rules and regulations, that step move. It's in there, each year.
Each year is something that might want, correct.
The change in the grid itself, though, that it would change, is there any change in the grid itself? The answer is yes. And what is, what does that change? And that change is not subject to the rules and regs. Making a change is subject to how you go about, whatever you do with it, but there's no amount of percent or anything like that in the rules and regs. And so that's what the question is. Where are we on that, on the grid itself? 2 percent?
2 percent. I've never seen the 2.75 percent as being part of rules or regs. I mean, it could be, I just have not seen that. This has always been a function of the Town Administrator and this was something that Robin had put forth, the current personnel pay grade. And she did send that to the Finance Committee upon completion of that as well.
So, I think it's one of the first, for me, to understand. The reason I say it's part of the rules and regs is that if you get an acceptable performance review, then your position, your position on the grid increases if you are not already at the top of the grid. Is that not part of the rules and regs?
That's a step.
That is a step.
That's what we call a step.
That's a step. That's a step, right? That's part of the rules and regs. That's what I mean.
Oh, the amount of 2.75, I think there's two questions.
That's.
That grid's first being put together is what's the step across and what's the COLA?
The COLA, exactly.
You were talking about the COLA, if the COLA's been put in?
We haven't determined the.
At least at the, we're all on board with what the situation is. The one that's a question in my mind would be if you would, the COLA, whatever it's going, it's really not a COLA.
Increase.
It's not driven by the government's numbers or whatever, it's what we choose to do, if anything. And I just want to understand what it is that we're, what numbers we're looking at in this budget. And I just want to understand what it is that we're, what numbers we're looking at in this budget. We, we know what we're looking at for the seats, collective bargaining, zero at this point. We know also that there's some models built with other ones. The second question is, the non-collective bargaining, how are they shown up in here? They're shown up as the change in the movement in the grid, assuming that everybody is performing adequately, or is.
The steps, are the steps included in as an assumption around the cola, so-called?
There is a, what's considered to be the approved pay grade for FY two thousand and twenty-one.
Yeah.
And that includes two point seven five percent step going across, and a two percent cola is also built into that.
So you built that in for these numbers?
And that's in here.
That's representative of the sheet.
Now, that two percent cola is something that is discretionary, clearly discretionary on our part, without doing anything with rules and regulations of the grid or anything of that nature. As a matter of fact, we're doing something with the grid if we put two percent in, we're increasing it. So that's a decision to change the grid from this year.
I believe that's on our discretion, the additional.
Yeah, it's been, it's been the function of the town administrator since I've been here.
And every year there has been increases.
Yeah.
And we know the, we know the FinCom has concerns about that, as I think all of us do, because we know how to add two and two and three quarter together, and we know what that equals. Well, not everybody, because some people are at the top, but not many. But that's a lot of, that's a lot of increase each year, uh, which is, as people would typically say, unsustainable. So if there are any discussion on that within, within the work you've done.
So we haven't, and we haven't addressed that directly because it was already, it was already passed along to the departments from my predecessor. It was inserted in the budget at the time I was coming in. We, I did have some conversations with the team about that. We have had conversations about what the, to understand what that model looks like, the history behind it as well, and what we've seen year over year. And so this year's submittal was in line with a number of years prior of how the, the increases have gone. But it does represent a, the bump that you mentioned.
Now I know what it is and what, what to get there.
I'd, I'd like to clarify Dick's point, speak up if I'm not saying something correct here. But there is concern on the parts of several people that this pay grid thing is unsustainable unless we agree to do a two and a half percent override every year, okay? It's, it's gotten nearly that bad. Now, I don't expect to resolve that today, I don't expect to resolve that in the next six months, but that's one of the important things that we've got to start talking about, to get, get that pay grade thing under control. But we got there a few years ago because we were, and we had a, an advisor that said, you're not paying your employees well enough, and that's why you can't keep them, and that kind of stuff. So the pay grid was set up and everybody was happy. But the fact of the matter is it's becoming unsustainable, in my opinion, and the part of our finance committee, okay? That's something we've got to work on. We've got other issues with labor contracts that we have to address too, that are glaring problems, and we'll, we'll be talking about those over the next few months.
So they've had this conversation frequently at the finance committee meetings as well, and they've looked at it in totality, though, that they need to, it's not just the personnel bylaws, it's also the school, the unions. They talked about setting up meetings with the board of selectmen to look at, look at the, the pay range on a whole, among the whole town, including the school and town together.
And no question, because the teachers have strong unions and represent critical portions and a large number of employees, their contract structures have tended to drive the, the, the way this is done. If you have, you know, union highway workers or somebody, you've got less than a dozen, but you might have sixty teachers across the system or something. The question that I have, and again, this is going on my basis of Masco, I know schools are a little bit different. What would happen is the steps would increase every year. In other words, those, you have a grid, the grid stays the same. The person moves across the grid, they would also go up. You, you get something for being in the job successfully, and you would get something based upon your, your, um, level of achievement in terms of grades and so on and so forth, but the dollar amounts in the grid never changed. The individuals within a given area would get whatever the so-called cola was each year, but you kept the numbers the same. So if somebody came in at step seven, two years from now, and we didn't change the grid, they would start at the same rate they'd start if they came in now. So isn't that the grid itself changed? It says everybody on the grid moves up by that two percent or whatever we agree on. The grid numbers themselves, my understanding is, don't change, is that accurate?
I'm not sure I follow how you say the, the grid numbers don't change, but they go up.
Because if you hire somebody in, you hire them in on the grid as a starting place, and then they get the colas in addition to whatever steps.
But the way that, the way that, I'm just gonna qualify, officially not a cola, but we call it a cola because it's.
I, yeah, I agree it's not, we use that because it's an easy term here.
The application of the cola goes against the grid as a whole and increases every number in every position in the grid by that amount. That's what, what the cola does.
So the grid itself changes numbers.
That's true of the teachers. That, that's the way theirs works. And sometimes theirs is one percent, sometimes two percent, whatever, but theirs works the same way, that's how it goes up. So let's go back to the example, it's always good to work with an example. Somebody who was hired as a teacher two years ago at, uh, step one, because that's their first year.
Right.
At step one, uh, for a bachelor's degree.
So they get forty thousand dollars.
Is going to get, two years ago, got forty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
If we hire them today, they don't get forty-five, they get forty-five plus what was put in last year for the grid and the following year, because we said two years ago.
That's different than Masco.
And, and so it, it comes out to be, you know, something like forty-seven and three.
So that's what I'm trying to clarify then, because in Masco, the grid numbers never change unless the school committee chooses to change them, and it's not an annual thing, which means the starting numbers stay the same. And if the person who was hired last year at forty thousand gets a five percent, just thinking about numbers needed, gets five percent and is now getting forty-two thousand, it doesn't mean the next person we hire in at that level starts at forty-two. No, they're still starting at forty. The grid stays the same, everybody currently employed on the grid moves up.
To be clear, though, the person who, the person who got hired last year and gets this five percent.
Yep.
The five percent is because they have one more year experience. This is the teacher side, and the teacher side grid goes, the way they think of it, is this is years of service up to thirteen. They have added, they tried to add sometimes another, but basically, they have thirteen years of service this way, and this way, it, it, yeah, right. This way is bachelor's, this is bachelor's plus fifteen, this is masters, all of those kinds. That's the amount of education that they have. So their grid is moving this way based on years and this way based on education.
Right, there were three raises most teachers get.
And, and the third raise is that the entire grid goes up by zero percent, one percent, two percent, whatever the, the agreement is in the contract for that particular year.
So again, that's not what happens, at least at Masco. The grid stays the same, you do, you do steps.
I'm not sure that, I know you're very much into it, but I'm not.
But if you're at the top of the grid and so on, um, you only get the, um, you only get the so-called cola.
And how do you get the cola? If you're at the very top, how do you get the cola?
Everybody gets the cola because.
The way you get the cola is the entire grid goes up by one percent or two percent or one or.
The grid that you're paying goes up, the grid that is used to start it. If somebody comes in and they qualified with a masters at a certain level of experience, and you bring them in at, um, masters step seven, for whatever reason. Typically, what we would do, if they didn't have experience, they come in masters step one, and they start.
Different school system, whatever, and they might give them seven.
But what I'm hearing here is with only two things, both the steps and the cost of living, you're saying the entire grid effectively goes up.
Last year on the budget, they, you know, was put in to do a salary compensation study, and they, they denied that. And then at the end of the session, Shay had actually volunteered to, to review and, and, you know, get deep into the, the pays across the town, including the school, one thing after another. He, he didn't get to it this year, but it's very much on their radar as well. And like I said, they also plan to have conversations with the board to look at it.
I think, I think that's great, and I appreciate, because I think what's happened is I've come to an understanding of a very significant difference between the salary grid, as we talk about it here, for town employees, where there's one thing that's changed at a discretionary level, and others is changed by contractual formula as you move on your steps. Whereas in the school system, the grid represented so-called steps and columns, experience and how, experience in this job and educational level. And the cola was on top of that. So for us, each teacher just saw their pay go up. If you took the individuals and mapped them against it, you might find somebody at column four, step seven, who's making more than somebody, um, at that level, because they, in fact, they'd had more time to be here, they'd collected more colas, they never go backwards, but, um, anyway, I don't need to explain what Masco.
Within step, the idea is within step you would go up because you quote have more experience, is that what you're saying?
Yes, but, yeah, as I said, when you say the grid, I have this rather standard, rigid model in my mind, because that's what I was used to. And I think I'm understanding now that because we do raise across the board, and it's one of only two factors, the reality is it does go up. And that we actually have the freedom for non-union people, whom we're talking about here, to start them at whatever salary we want. So they're not bound to start at what somebody else started at that, so whatever we negotiate, then they're on the grid and they move up with everybody else. That makes more sense to me.
I agree, and, and our grid, in a sense, never moves, it's different, though, I see. Our grid never moves, a person never moves in, in our grid this way unless their job changes.
Exactly. So if you keep the same job, any, sort of if you will call it vertical motion this way, is entirely a function of what everybody gets, which is why the grid itself moves.
Assistant assessor, and the assessor left, and now you're the assessor. Change in job, go up as, as, one or two steps, whatever happens.
Exactly.
That's the only way that that changes.
Right.
One thing I think would be helpful, and FinCom asked for this last year, and we did not provide it, the town administrator did not want to provide it, was information about where everybody non-union is right now in the pay grid. Because they were trying to do some projections about at what point are we going to hit the top? Will everybody be at the top, in which case we won't have the two point seven five percent being added on? That is something that they're going to need to look at that total picture. They do not have the salary information right now for such people.
So the, on the, uh, line items, uh, itemized budget, it does actually, it references, I believe, the.
It does for, for each position, yeah.
So it, it's not a clean version that lists everything out on one sheet per se?
Yeah, because they're gonna need that to put into their model, so it's gonna be very tough for them to try to extract.
First page, for example, purchasing development, the first page, purchasing development under the budget notes. Personal bylaws FY twenty-one, grade seven, step eight. It says that for every, every position that's on the bylaws.
But we, we.
That's really tough, I think, for them to extract, I think.
We can certainly.
Yeah, there's spreadsheets available too.
How many people do we have, twenty-four, twenty-five?
I think there's more than that, I don't have off the top of my head.
Okay, it's thirty people in one spreadsheet that says the person. And what, uh, step they're at, so that you know at what point it's going to peak and why is it gonna start.
I think that's great information for everybody, have eyes wide open on what people are making. Absolutely, and it, it's on the sheet to start with, but we'll get you a more clean copy so people can.
Oh, for FinCom, they have been asking for it for a year.
What I think we're doing here, which is most important, is recognizing there are some conversations about significant long-term changes, or say, changes with long-term impacts that need to start in calendar year, or should we call it FY twenty-twenty-one? We gotta get this budget through without trying to push a lot of changes and so on, but, um, it will need to be some, and should be some conversations of exactly the type we're talking about, you know? How are we going to slow the growth past our ability to pay and so on, and I'm delighted we're having that.
Because that information is also really helpful with going into budget negotiations with the unions.
Oh, yeah, well, it's critically important, yeah, no, I agree, I agree totally.
And they don't have that information right now.
Yeah, it's absolutely the right conversation to have. Our largest expenditure as, as a town is, is salaries, it's the double.
Very clearly, yeah.
And we've got a great team, great people, people I've worked with, they're fantastic.
That's the important thing.
No, absolutely, but, I mean.
We have the right people.
The, uh, to the point earlier, sustainability, um, it's a reality, you know, what, what's, what makes the most sense for tops feel.
And to make it fair, because usually what's happened is the non-union folks are the only ones that are really discussed at the time of the budget, is that has some flexibility, because the contracts have already been signed, and it puts them in an unfair position.
Sure.
So if all of that information is gathered early enough to make a difference to the, the contracts, then it's not only the, the non-union folks who are constantly.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Whose pay is discussed.
It's absolutely the right place to start with.
And we understand also what the numbers here are, you're very clear on it. Zero for the unions, the grid, two percent, all that stuff.
Based on this, that is very, yeah, no, okay, absolutely. So this, this sheet right here, though, I'm now passing out the, uh, it just shows year over year of the last four years what our increases, increases to the operating budget has looked like. The, below the line on each of these columns, the bottom line, shows what the non-school portions of the town-only budget and what that increases look like. So as you can see, the, of the last, including this year, four years, this one is, is right at or below what we've seen historically for the most part, so, just to get it to reference. So, um, it's always good to look back historically at what, what we've done to sort of position ourselves and where we're lining up.
It's a very good thing to have here.
This is helpful.
I can't, I'm amazed, at the, uh, the second one down is a minus, and the third one goes up to six percent. I mean, it's almost like it was just a, it's an unusual anomaly, we don't understand what that was.
Yeah, so Catherine and I actually talked about this yesterday, um, and this is one of those items, they said we were ninety, ninety-five percent there. There's so many line items within this budget that could, could cause that change, um, that we, we were gonna take a, a look at.
We have to understand what that is.
We'll have some better information for you on it, but just broadly speaking, one, at least give you, for today's purposes, at least.
Because that feels like the, the, the debt, the money that was set aside for debt or something like that.
Yeah, that's what we're doing too. I think the place that you wanna look at the comparison is, is in the expenditures.
In the expenditure.
Yeah, and that's, that's more realistic.
Less than debt, yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah, or even if you include the debt, it's the expenditures from year to year. But if you remember during, um, let's see, so twenty nineteen and eighteen, there was a lot of debt in the year, and we were making estimates based on timing of when we were going to bond.
You have to have enough to pay for the short-term debt, you gotta pay your bills, all that sort of thing, yes.
I think including just a little narrative on the biggest reasons that we went from four point nine percent to minus two point three percent, a little narrative.
Can I offer a different narrative? I would tend to hold this one, and so we do more of what Catherine said.
Oh, I agree, I think we can have it right now.
Just squeeze out so that we have a meaningful review of what's here.
This is a great place to start, we're gonna need more information, but ultimately, I think this will be a very helpful thing for us, frankly, for the FinCom too, to understand. This is a piece of paper we haven't looked at clearly in the past.
So just, it, some of the highlights, I guess, at this point, just to kind of give you a quick tour of what the operating budget looks like. What, what we're planning to do, as the chairman said earlier, is, uh, the next three working sessions that we'll have is to carve out time for specific departments within each of those. So we'll schedule that, um, to, to talk in depth about each of the line items. The TA is selecting budget, obviously, is one that, um, we're very intimately close to in the sense that we're.
Start with that one.
We start with that one. You know, with the collective bargaining coming up, um, one thing that we did do is we, we looked at the actuals the last time negotiations happened, it was about seventy thousand dollars. We have budget fifty-five thousand dollars annually for, um, legal fees, and so we're looking at, uh, for this year, bumping that up to give us a little bit of, um, some availability. We also have the, the two cable contracts, which we'll be negotiating as well. So there'll be some, some legal fees this coming year that come up, and so we wanted to make sure we had some coverage. We didn't get all the way up to that seventy, because we, we wanna work within our means, and we don't wanna, we wanna make sure, but we wanna make sure we have enough coverage, so we need to make that call during the contract negotiations we can. There's also some, um, regards to the facilities management. Spent some real-time understanding facility dude and meeting Paul and how the, the arrangement's been working. And it seems like the path that the, the town was taking and is, is taken right now, is the right path. Right now, departments in their individual buildings are, are just picking up the phone when there's a leaky pipe, and they're trying to find that, that plumber or anything to come and help them out. When, rather than being on the streets protecting, as a police officer or firefighter, whatever they might be doing, or helping out the children section in the library, they're worrying about that. So having that facilities person makes a lot of sense, to be able to coordinate those efforts in the facility dude program is gonna allow for those work orders to even expedite it further. So there's a system that, that's been built out, Donna Rich has done a lot of work on that, gets a lot of credit for that, that work to bring it to where it is, um, that we're looking to actually, based on expanding it beyond, sort of a pilot, as I. That we're looking to actually, based on expanding it beyond, it was sort of a pilot, as I understand it, use, uh, facility maintenance at town hall, expanding that out to cover all the buildings. So that, um, we have a, a person immediately that someone can call if there's an issue. And that person then responsible for seeing that project.
We, we started that conversation with the FinCom, and we had nothing for, for facilities manager. And, uh, we talked about the fact that we had a brand-new building here that cost ten million bucks, and nobody on-site or in-town to take care of.
Yeah.
And, uh, so that's how we hired Paul.
Right.
Uh, FinCom, uh, agreed to give us twenty-five grand to start that process. And, uh, it's grown a little bit because of, uh, using facility dude as a guidance. And, uh, uh, he's done some good things and he's, and he's pushing out into other, because of facility dude, he's pushing out into other facilities, right? The library, fire, police and stuff like that. So, you know, I hope and I kind of expect that that will continue and will grow appropriately.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's good. Again, we've got some estimates of what we think now the costs, now that we're expanding out will be. And the numbers you'll see as we go through this are more conservative than I think that they would like. But I think that's because we, again, we want to live within our means and, and, and not put too much into the budget and then have to pull back. I think it's, we want to make incremental steps when it comes to that. And sort of the actuals today have shown that there is a need to grow it already. And the expansion that sort of, I mean, further solidifies the need.
Are we looking at that to be a regional position or just for Topscio?
Currently for Topscio. Currently for Topscio.
And does it have to be a Topscio position or can it be an outsourced position? In other words, they've got to be people in the business. Maybe Paul is the one to, to do it for the next two years or something he's interested in. But I don't think it's a full-time position. And perhaps we, some, well, it's higher. We, we, he is a consultant. He's been engaged as a consultant to help us out, which to me is a great way to go about doing it. If he's happy with it too, and he's doing a good job, I think that might be the, at least the current direction. Maybe in the future, we could look at regional. As soon as you do regional, it's, we own the people, right?
We might, or another town.
There's, uh, there's been.
Consider old lady, you got to pay.
To Lynn's point, there's been some conversation about that already.
Yeah.
Possibility, actually, needs to be looked at for sure.
Are we looking at increasing the number of hours? Right now, Paul, I don't know how many hours that translated into with the twenty-five thousand, but.
Sure, so right now, um, we're, five months left, six months left. We're already spent, I believe, close to three-fourths or two-thirds of the budget. We're, we're tracking to, to, to have a greater need financially in that, that line item. A lot of it, I think, was due to the onboarding of facility dude.
Yeah, that was a big undertaking.
And that took real time. And so when we've sat down to sort of estimate now that we have facility dude and the process associated with how that will work for work orders, and looked at entirety of the different buildings, fire station, police station, library and others, um, what that would look like. The number was twelve hours a week, which would represent about forty-seven thousand dollars a year. And we pared that down to thirty-five thousand dollars. Again, trying to make sure that we're taking the right incremental steps and not just going full, fully for it. We're going to continue to, I need to circle back to Paul again, just to, to let him know where we, where we are and how much we can get out of that. But, um, there's a lot of unknowns still around it because of the facility dude now being, will, will be on-boarded in the next few months officially with the different departments.
To the point of regionalization, it doesn't mean they have to be employed. It can be a contractor who's working several towns where you get a contract to scale.
It's a contract where they agree to respond at a set rate for a period of time. So that you know what you're into. And in theory, if it's done properly, you get a better deal each time you're called, not only in terms of an expected rate that is as favorable to town as possible, but also that there's a certain obligation on their part to come. So if you call it ten times.
I think there's two elements in it. One is that of a manager who brings together all of these things.
Yeah, great.
And the second piece is the actual doer of something.
You're right.
So do we need to do something? Yes, we do, based on a schedule that we need to do it, or we have a problem, we need to do something because we've got to get them back up. So that's what the manager part is doing and then the actual calling.
Yeah, I agree there. That's great. I'm just disappointed I'm not going to get the shovel anymore.
That doesn't have to suck.
I was out there for the salt load, actually, the slippery. No, it's, uh, something in our budget. I just want to point it out, and we'll have a further conversation with it.
If you intend, if you intend to get here the first, before anybody else in the morning, you've got a shovel. But it's all, but the way it's all, it's all been done that way.
I see he's not. We just want to see their big footprints, footprints coming up in the footprints of snow.
One of our, uh, boys, uh, FinCom chair said one time to people who were complaining, he said, "We all do windows."
No, so that, that's just another one I want to make sure I flag for, for you folks as you, as you review that. Because again, I think the, uh, the TA budget's one that should get the scrutiny and should be looked at and vetted. So I just want to make you aware of that. Just generally within the budget, um, I've just got some quick notes, just highlights. There are, um, a lot of just contractual increases, munis system, for example, one. Some of our, um, our GIS system, for example, is another. Usually, hopefully, a nominal increase associated. You'll see that throughout the budget.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
For Catherine. Catherine, if I remember correctly, you have separated out software from other maintenance. It used to be a very big one that had both of them. Didn't you do that with two line items last year?
Yes.
So I want to compliment you on that. It was a, it was a real problem, because we were mixing software, which has this kind of driven by outside, we, we don't have a control over it. And it's sole, sole source. And then we had the maintenance in it. It was the biggest one-line item in there, but Catherine's done the job of breaking those things out. So I think it's helpful, because it also helps us answer questions when people ask, why did this go up? The whole thing in that particular category line item has to do with software. And we can explain what happens with software these days, and we don't necessarily control it that well.
Yeah, the, the other two is there's, there's still some unknowns around heating and providing power to this building now that we moved in. We don't have a full year of actuals yet, as I understand it. So we did make some assumptions on there, um, with regards to what that looks like.
Only this building that's an issue?
Just this building.
Okay.
Um, every other building that there's.
We were assuming whatever gas cost is going to be the same or whatever, whatever.
And we've, we've been able to, with our budget, we, we, you'll see there's some changes within that, just to be a little more accurate. The other thing I'll mention too is that, um, the town, the clerk's office, it's not large increases, but because there'll be three elections this coming year rather than two, there's about a, an increase on each, a, a number of the line items around rental of facilities by the election, personnel being there, exact election personnel.
Do we have to rent Masco?
It's a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes.
Oh, a hundred and fifty bucks, okay. I'm not going to put it in. And then obviously, there's, there's, um, with the new chief as well, there'll be, um, we'll, we'll be doing a search.